With our work session several months ago, I talked with Reed and Dale MacRaeley, he's with Merchant Capital. And we know we're doing a downtown revitalization, got a bank loan interest summary right now, First National. At some point, we're gonna need to borrow money to fix that, to take care of that project. But also, he's letting me know that our 2006 bonds could possibly be refinanced at a lot cheaper rate and save us over $200,000 in interest coming up in the next few months. And that's one thing probably could do for sure, but any other new money, this might be a good time to do if we want to. And so Reed, I'm gonna let you talk if you want this microphone.
All right.
And then just take your time and go ahead.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you, I appreciate you letting me be here tonight. And Dale and I have First National Bank here in Hamilton. We've had a good partnership and done a lot of work here for the city. We're gonna talk about that for a little bit. But as the mayor mentioned, you've got some bonds that can be refinanced, interest rates have dropped. We'll talk about the bond market a little bit and what's going on in the bond market. You've got an opportunity to save some money. And then to the extent that you need some new money needs with rates being as low as they are, this is a good time to lock in your interest rate. What I thought I would do first is just tell you, you know, a lot of the council members who weren't here in some of the previous administrations when we've done work and may not have been through a bond financing before, I was gonna tell you a little bit about us and about who we are and about how bond issues work, your credit rating, so on and so forth, some of the things that are important to understand when you're looking at a bond financing. So I thought I'd go through that first, and then we'll dive into the particulars on your numbers and that sort of thing. You know, Merchant Capital, we're headquartered in Montgomery, Alabama. We have an office in Atlanta, we have one in Seattle, Washington, actually, that does a lot of affordable housing. And we are a, we're not a bank, we are a securities firm. So all we do every day are bond issues for cities, counties, water boards, universities, that sort of thing. We don't make commercial loans, we don't have checking accounts and savings accounts, that sort of thing. We're not a bank, we're a securities firm. And this is really our niche, and this is all that we do. And I'm gonna go kinda quickly through some of the commercial, because I know you guys need, y'all wanna get on to your families and that sort of thing, but I do wanna hit a few of the highlights. You know, the rankings just came out for last year, and you know, we are consistently at the top. We underwrote about a billion two in municipal bonds last year, we did 98 deals. We underwrote more bonds than all of the other Alabama-based companies put together. So this is again, a big part of what we do. And again, we're going to market more than anybody else that's headquartered here in the state of Alabama. If you look at a 20-year history, we've underwritten about $20 billion of municipal bonds and almost 1,500 deals. So we've been very blessed to have success. I've got some written copies of this presentation, and it's got a few newspaper articles, that sort of thing, in there, so you can look at those when you have a minute. I'm gonna skip over that for now. And these are just some tombstones of some clients that we work with. Again, City of Hamilton, we've done three deals for totaling over $15 million. Hoover's a big client, Orange Beach and Gulf Shores are both clients of ours. In the area, we did Upper Bear Creek and did halable water deals, recently worked on those with Dale, so done a good bit of work here in the area as well. When we went through the credit crisis in 2008, you may remember when Lehman Brothers crashed, that was kind of the dividing point and the whole world changed. And one of the things that's really important for municipalities is you have to have your credit rating established. Your credit rating tells investors, you know, they've got an independent third party that has come here, looked at the city, looked at your audits, they've talked to the management team, and Jan knows, 'cause she's been on these calls before and done a great job on them. But you have an independent third party that comes and looks and assesses the credit of the City of Hamilton. Before Lehman crashed in 2008, what we would do is just go and you'd get bond insurance, and you'd get a big insurance company to basically co-sign your bonds with you, and they carry a triple-A rating, and you put their triple-A rating on the bonds, and you're off to the races, you go sell triple-A rated bonds. Well, what happened, all those insurance companies went bankrupt. And so a lot of these bonds out there that were triple-A, they went to junk status overnight. And so what the investors really started saying is, hey, we wanna know, if this bond insurance company gets in trouble, we wanna know what kind of credit we've got here at the City of Hamilton. When they go out to the market, what's their ability to pay us back? And so that's what the credit rating is for. We were very fortunate to help you get your first credit rating here in Hamilton. You have an A, which is a very good credit rating, and we helped you get that established for the first time back in 2009. This is the scale, I just wanted you to see this. You got three major rating agencies that rate municipal bonds, Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch. You're rated by Standard &amp; Poor's, and you have an A, so you're right there in the middle of the A category. These are all investment-grade bonds here. When you dip below this line right here, you're what we call junk status. You know, Jefferson County may ring a bell to some of you, they kinda dip down in here, you don't wanna be down in there. They're actually back up in here now. And we didn't do the original Jefferson County deal, but we did just help them come out of bankruptcy and sold their latest deal, and that was rated investment grade, so we were real happy about that. The City of Hamilton's right here at A, so if you get upgraded, you'd go to an A+, if you got downgraded, you'd go to an A-. So you got a good solid A credit rating, and that's a very good rating for a city your size with your characteristics and demographics and population and all that sort of stuff. Again, this is a cover sheet of the document, this is the document we use to sell the bonds out in the bond market. And this is just a picture of the cover sheet of it. And I just wanted to show you, again, this is, this was done in 2009, the City of Hamilton issued almost $5.5 million worth of bonds. You have a triple-A rating, and slash, and an A. Again, the triple-A refers to the insurance company, they no longer have a triple-A rating anymore, they're double-A-, so they have since been downgraded. But the City of Hamilton's credit rating is single A. So at the time you sold that triple-A rating, we called it that, an insured rating, and it had an underlying rating of A, which underlying rating refers to the city's rating. Good news about this, you got triple-A rates, and when that company got downgraded, your rate didn't change a bit. The bond investors take the risk of whether or not you get downgraded, but when you sell your deal on the bond market, you're fixed for good, so your payments don't change. So that's a, it's a very conservative approach, been tried and true for a lot of years, and I'll spare you all the details, but that's what got Jefferson County in trouble, was moving away from selling fixed-rate bonds like this. They got into doing derivatives and swaps and variable rate debt, and it blew up on them. This kind of debt is very conservative, and if Jefferson County had not, they actually had some debt like this, and they refinanced it with variable rate debt, and that's what got them in trouble. If they had left it alone, they never would've gone bankrupt. So this is a conservative approach. Again, just going back to our history with the city, and when I say ours, I mean First National Bank and Merchant Capital, we partnered on these, but we brought an idea to the city in 2006 to refinance the 97 bonds, saved over $200,000. Came back the next year and recommended refinancing the 02A bonds, saved $200,000. And in 2009, the deal we just looked at, that saved about $200,000 as well, refinancing prior debt. So every one of those issues was a refinancing of prior debt, it didn't have any new debt in there. Again, helped get the first credit rating, bond insurance, and then you were also reviewed in 2012, we worked with Jan on that, and the rating agencies, they will review the credit periodically. And so they reviewed you in 2012, and they came out and said, we're gonna affirm their A rating. So that was good, you didn't get downgraded. A lot of cities all over the country are getting downgraded in this environment, 'cause of the economy and sluggish tax revenues and that sort of thing, so y'all held your own. So we were very pleased to see that. So now let's talk about what the city, the particulars of your debt profile. Again, you've got the 2009 warrants, and you can see those bonds pay off in the year 2019. These are the annual payments for the 2009 bonds each year. So that's a very short-term piece of debt. You've got USDA, US Department of Agriculture Rural Development Loan that is, was done in 2009, it goes out to 2039, but it's a fairly, you know, fairly small loan in the grand scheme of things, the payments aren't that large. You've got a 2007 bond, that's one of the ones we did to refinance prior debt, and it pays out in 2027. You got a 2006 warrant, those were used to refinance prior debt, those pay off in the year 2022. And then you had a bond issue that you took out in 1999, it was for the Colby Project, and that paid off this year. Okay, so that payment goes away. So if you look at your total bond payments, and this doesn't include any bank loans, but today, you're at $1,771, and you can see that's gonna drop down to $1,618, and it stays there for a while, for a few years, then it drops down to $1,500, then it drops down a bunch, and that's when these 09 bonds pay off. It drops down to 960, and then it drops again when these 06s pay off, down to 4 something, and then finally it drops off there at the end. So what this tells someone in my business is, your debt is, one, your debt burden's low, and that's what the rating agencies say. For a city your size, you don't have a lot of debt per person, number one. Number two, your debt is fairly short-term. This is your biggest, these are your biggest payments, and they pay off in 2019, that's five years.
Reed, if we matter note that, this is water.
Right.
That's what we pay like.
Yeah, a lot of this, some of this debt is water debt, related to the water system. And so that's a good point, thank you, Mayor, 'cause you have those revenues coming in to help pay that debt back. I appreciate you pointing that out, that's exactly right. So you've got a lot of capacity here, is what this tells us, 'cause your debt falls off pretty quickly. So what we looked at is a couple of things. Number one, if you refinance the 2006 bonds, remember, that's these bonds right here, okay? And remember, they pay off in 2022. All right, and those bonds are callable, and if you refinance them today, again, refinancing the new deal would still pay off in 2022, we're not stretching that out, so we're keeping the term the same, just lowering the interest rate, and the city gets the savings. The interest rate on those bonds right now, the average rate is 3.9%, and you could lower it in today's market to about 2. So you're close to 4, and you could get it down to close to 2. You're almost cutting your interest rate in half. And that's gonna generate right about $200,000 in net savings to the city. That's after the cost of issuance and all that, that's a net number, present value number. So if you do nothing else, I would tell you, y'all would take the $200,000, that's free money, we're not stretching the term out, you just either lower your payments, or you keep your payments the same and take the $200,000 and use it around the city for park improvements or whatever you wanna do with it. So that's the first item there. The second option is, what if we needed some new money? Okay, so we looked at $2 million, and we ran that over a 20-year amortization. And they really, the payments really kick in in the next fiscal year, okay? So that Colby loan is paid off, so while you're paying, today you're paying $1,771, your payments are gonna stay right around the same, because that Colby loan is drawn up, they're actually gonna be about $30,000 less for a little while, then they continue to fall off like they do today. And so because you've got a short-term debt profile where the payments go down, you're in a position to get $2 million of new money, a rate of about 3.5% fixed for 20 years, and yet your payments don't really go any higher than what they are today, in fact, they're a little bit less, they're about $30,000 less. And you can see that the Colby loan was about 163, these are about 140, and then you've got some savings on the refinancing. So you're able to keep your payments from a cash flow perspective, lower than what they are today, and still be able to get the $2 million of new money. Another option we looked at is the exact same as the last one, except on the two, the only difference is, on the $2 million, we said, what if you waited until these 09 bonds pay off? Those are your biggest payments, before you start amortizing the principal on them. So it's still a 20-year amortization, top to bottom, they still pay out in 2034, we just pick the principal up in 2020 after these have paid off. And that just lowers your payments a little bit more over here. If cash flow is an issue, then you may wanna consider doing that. It's more expensive to do it that way, you know? Total principal and interest over the life, $3,520, and if you go back and just start paying on it immediately, it's $2,854. So it's a little more expensive to wrap it that way, but if you need that extra little cash flow relief, a lot of municipalities like to do that. It really doesn't matter, it just depends on what your desires are there. Then the third option is, okay, what, you know, City of Hamilton hasn't borrowed any new money really since 2002, I think you did some water improvements, last three deals have all been refinancings, you know? We don't know what your needs are, we don't know how much money you may need or not need, but we just picked a number. What if it was $5 million? What would that look like? And the way we structured that is, is we said, okay, on this refunding, we need to add a couple of years, two years to it, so instead of it paying off in 2022, it would pay off in 2024. You can see that cuts your present value saving, instead of saving $200,000, you're saving about 180. You may remember that old rate was about 2.11, now it's 2.45, that's 'cause you've tacked a couple of years on there. But what that allows you to do is to come over here and keep your payments still less than where they are today. So this is the refunding, we've added two years, then we came over here with the new money on the $5 million, and we said, let's start picking up these principal payments in 2020 after these 09 bonds pay out in five years. And let's run the whole thing on a 20-year am, top to bottom, so that's still a conservative payout, you're still paying the debt off in 2034, but because of this, the way the debt structured, your total payments are still less than what they are today. You got a payment today of a million, in this fiscal year of $1,771, and you're talking about, you know, next year in 2015, it'd be $1,687, so it's even about $100,000 less. And again, we get, we get to that by adding two years on to this deal and keeping these payments a little bit lower, and by putting this principal payment, starting it back after the 09 series have fallen off. So that is a, those are several options, I'm gonna, I got another slide or two, but I wanna make sure, I need to go back over that. I know sometimes this is like drinking out of a fire hose, it's a lot of numbers, and it's kinda why I like to be able to point, I love this little thing here, I hope it's not too annoying, but I love to be able to point, 'cause there's a lot going on, but are there any questions or anything you'd like me to go back over?
Reed, what's the timeline on, you and I talked, say we wanted to do extra money, if we want to, what's the time on that that you would need in order for the refinance of the bond you're doing?
All right, good question. These, these 06 bonds are callable, they're callable in August, but you, the IRS, the tax law says you can refinance them 90 days prior to that, so that puts you in May 1, and that's when you can close. So that would put you, usually sell bonds, you know, anywhere from four, two to four weeks before you close, so that puts you selling bonds first of April. And then you need a good, you know, 45 days to get your credit rating in place, get your bond documents all put together, that sort of thing, so now you don't have to sell them May 4, I'm just saying that's the earliest you could do it. So, you know, it's not at all too soon to be talking about it tonight, but you're looking at about, from the time, you know, if y'all picked the phone and said, all right, let's get going, you're probably 45 days till you close and have the money. And we just need that date to be after May 1 on the refinancing piece. So, I don't know how well you can see this, this is an interesting chart, this goes back to 1994, that's what that says right there, it doesn't really show that well, but you can see where interest rates were. This is an indicative kind of rate of where cities and counties borrow money at, and it's about a 12-year rate. When you do a 20-year bond issue, your average life's about 12 years, so this is a pretty good indication of where you would borrow. This is the 12-year interest rate in the mini-bond market since 1994, and you can see, you know, where we've been. This is when Lehman Brothers crashed, you know, and we all thought the world was coming to an end. I thought I was gonna be out of work and have to go start a new career, and everything was gonna come to an end, and then boom, it dipped right back down, and you know, we were back off to the races. About a year ago, we just came out of a 50-year low in the bond market, right there. Last summer, rates went back up, and then you can see from here to here, they dipped this year. So if you're right here and you go back over from a historical perspective, if you lock in today, you're locking in at a rate lower than you could at any time, except right in So, you know, the moral of that story is rates are still really low, they're not as low as they were a year ago, but they're still low. And the other thing is, you can probably see, you know, the market's been very volatile, up, down, I mean, look how sharp that rose. I had a client that was a few weeks away from selling here, and they ended up selling about right there, made a big difference on their deal, and just one of those things. It goes to the, to the point though, I think, Mayor, had they gotten their paperwork ready, 'cause we've been talking to them all in here, and I kept saying, you guys need to get your paperwork ready, we're at a 50-year low in the market, and they wanted to have another meeting, have another meeting, have another meeting, have another meeting. Well, they were doing a $30 million deal, they were wrapping around, bottom line, it cost them $8 million more in interest between here and here. And, you know, we kept trying to say, get your paperwork ready, get your paperwork ready, you don't have to go, you don't have to sell bonds, but if you got all your paperwork ready and got your rating done, then you're ready to go in the market when you wanna go in the market. And so my best advice is, if you know you need to do something, like you know we at least wanna do the refinancing, doesn't cost you any, go and get your paperwork ready. And then you can decide on the exact amount of new money and that sort of thing as you go, as you're doing your paperwork, get that paperwork ready. We don't know, these rates, they could go back down here, they could go back up here, or here, you know, we don't know where they're going, but what we do know is they're pretty good right now. If you go back over here, that's a pretty good time to lock in, you've only had one other time in the last 20 years, you couldn't beat where you are today. So, again, not trying to rush anybody, but just if you know you wanna do something, my best advice is always, go ahead and get your paperwork going. I think that's it. So, again, I'm happy to take any questions, or, Jan, you've been through this several times, you may have some thoughts or questions, I don't know, but, or maybe I missed something that I should've covered. Dale?
Just move over here, see if they're gonna borrow. If they need to borrow money, there's not gonna be a cheaper time to borrow money than right now. So, for any projects or any long-term, now's the time to do it.
Yeah, what happened right here, this is when Bernanke, we were rocking along just fine, and Ben Bernanke, the chairman of the Federal Reserve, came out and said, we're gonna stop buying all these bonds in the market. They're printing money and going out and buying bonds in the market, which, you know, has been good for my business, but personally, I'm not crazy about that policy. And it drove interest rates down, but he came out and said, we're gonna stop doing that, and, I mean, look how quick that moved up. I mean, it didn't take long at all, that happened shockingly fast, we were all stunned. I mean, we'd come into work every day, and they were going up, you know, a tenth of a percent, you know, another tenth, another tenth, another tenth, and it just, it got up, that happened pretty quickly. So we've come down off of that high a little bit, so. Mayor, you've been through this too.
Yes, Reed, you did a very good job, very professional, did a second job, I think it's a good problem.
Mayor, was there anything I didn't cover, or any points you wanted me to address?
Well, no, you covered everything, I think. My question would be, council and I probably need to have some more meetings, where we can kinda discuss a plan of, do we wanna pursue a water park, or do we wanna pursue, are we gonna pay for downtown revitalization, or we're gonna do some upgrades in our water and sewer and fire department, things that we might need, capital improvements, that's some things that we need to discuss with one another to figure out, 'cause I think we need to do a little more than just refinancing to save the $200,000. If we do any new money, now's the time to do it. We know we're gonna have to do some, like the downtown revitalization part, we're committed to that, but if we do anything extra, that's, you know, now would be the time, if we want to, to pursue that also, 'cause, you know, there's, we have a lot of needs, that don't mean we do everything we want, but we need to do some, we need to do some things. I'd like to say just do something for our kids and youth, some type of park, if possible, while we can. We know there's needs, there's improvements in our apartments, there's upgrades that we need to do, fire department, water, sewer lines, water lines, fire hydrants, things like that, streets, so, I mean, we could do a bunch, but I'm not saying we need to, I'm just saying, now's the time to do it if we're going to.
You may not want me to say this, but forgive you for saying it, but, yeah, we ran numbers last year for the city that, the city could actually take on about, what, 11, 12, 13 million dollars worth of debt, and keep their payments where they are today, about the same, yeah?
Yeah, that, you've got a really, again, short-term debt profile, your debt falls off really fast, and that allows you to fill in the backend, so it's, it's a unique, somewhat unique situation that you're in. I think a lot of that just comes from you haven't done any debt in a long, any new debt in a long time.
I think you're right, 'cause that's the key, the past three or four administrations has been paying the debt down and doing an excellent job, great job.
We just haven't borrowed any new money and had any new projects, so if we're gonna do new projects, I think we're a short window of trying to figure out what we're gonna do. I appreciate you coming, I like knowing that you keep your yearly debt about the same, 'cause we really can't afford that anymore to do.
Right.
We're not overbuns for money, but we're making it fine, but we had 200, 300,000 more in debt a year, that's gonna really hurt us.
Yep.
We can't afford to do that.
Right.
But we leave about the same, I'd like this off the door.
Well, you know, citizens need to know, y'all have done a good job with your city, it's well-run, it's well-managed, you know, I'll take my word for it, you got Standard &amp; Poor's, it says that, so, you know, kudos to you for that, but, you know, we're a conservative firm, we do, you won't find us out there, you know, loading up cities with too much debt. The last thing we want is a newspaper article two years from now saying this city's having trouble paying their debt, and, well, who did it? Well, Merchant Capital, you know, we don't want that going on. We're really conservative, everything we've talked about here tonight's not gonna hurt your credit rating, 'cause you've got the capacity to service the debt. So, but again, that's, you know, you're exactly right, that's for y'all to figure out, and we're around as a resource. If you want us to get started on the refunding, you gotta draft this official statement, and whether you do new money or just do the refunding, it's gonna have just the same number of pages in it. I mean, there's a lot of info in the city, and we gotta work with Jan, she's been through this, but if you want us at some point to get started on that, just let us know, we're happy to get started on it, and if you change your mind, decide not to do anything, rates go up, whatever, then you're not gonna owe us or owe the bond lawyer any fees for putting this together, so.
Reed, we have just another work session of you and I and council, we won't meet again until the first Monday of March, but I say between now and then, would you be willing to come back and talk to us?
Sure.
We're gonna crunch some numbers.
Yeah, absolutely.
Our account, Alan Council was gonna try to be here, but he's tied up with taxes tonight, couldn't make it.
Yep.
He wants to, he's looked at what you gave me, and he wants to have some of it too, him too, 'cause he's our accountant.
Yeah, we've talked to Alan through our rating process before, and so be happy to do that. You let me have a win, and we'll be here.
All right, that's it?
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Shut down this.
While you're shutting that down, I'm going to let Heath come, Heath Reed, and Heath talk to us a little bit about what you wanna propose to us, and let us just think about this too. This is all night, it's just really for discussion, and we're not open to anything, but it gives us an opportunity to discuss some things that we have in our minds for several months, so.
Okay.
I met with Mayor, I guess, two or three weeks ago, discussed something that we've discussed numerous times before, which is the Muncie Ware building. We've looked at options, I look back today, I probably had twenty cost estimates in my computer, different options we've looked at, renovating the building, demolishing part of the building, demolishing all of the building. In our discussion a couple weeks ago, the idea came back to us again about a demolition of the building. And I'd given the mayor some suggestions of some things we need to do if we go down and we decide to demolish the building. Obviously, we need to think about if we demolish that building, the basement needs to be filled in. We don't wanna take the top off the building, leave that basement as a dangerous situation, as an eyesore. So what I suggested was if you decide to go ahead and do the demolition of the building, is have the contractor, you know, bid out a project. Even though that, that may be a very low number, you know, contractors may come in and say, I'll take that building down for free, the value of that project is several hundred thousand dollars. So that needs to be bid because of public bid law, even though the, you know, they may bid a dollar, I don't know, whatever their number is, the value of that scope of work is greater than, you know, the bid law of fifty thousand dollars, that would need to be bid out. But my suggestion was that we include in that package the demolition of the building and also a site grading, so that you can come in and fill the basement up, remove all the debris, possibly even break the dams or the ponds, fill those in, just make that one large project. So that contractor that takes down the building doesn't just leave you with a mess that you've gotta clean up later. So I gave the mayor, asked me for a proposal for our firm to put that package together. I don't know if the council has got a copy of that, Mayor.
I did give them one, but I hope they have one tonight.
I'll briefly run through what our proposal was and what all that would include. We proposed to do a topographic survey of the site that basically gives you a contour amount for grading for future projects. I know we looked at several offices out there, ball fields, aquatic facility, several things. You would need a good topo survey of the site, so we would do that, one-foot contour item, one-foot contour topo of the site. A site grading plan, so that once the building is gone, if you chose to go that route, the contractor will have a plan to know this is what I've gotta leave the site, this is the condition I gotta leave it in. Specifications and bid documents for demolition. You know, I know it sounds simple, just tell the contractor to go tear it down, but we need to make sure we go through the proper procedures of demolition, that the materials are hauled at the proper landfill, we give them the specifications and the bid documents that need to go by. We handle all the advertisements for bid, preparation of all the contract documents, getting contractors the information they need to bid on the project. And then one thing I mentioned to the mayor is, there needs to be some oversight, some inspection that goes on during that demolition. You know, if a contractor comes in here and takes building down and just takes it somewhere off and somebody's hollering and dumps it and the city is locked, this is the city's property, so that building debris needs to be taken to a certified C and D landfill. So there needs to be some project oversight, some inspection. Obviously, there's some material in that building that can be salvaged, the steel could be, sole is salvaged, but some of the inert materials, some of the construction materials need to be taken to a proper C and D landfill and disposed of appropriately. So, you know, I'd recommend that you do some type of inspection of the contractor that does that work. So that's our proposal, to put that package together for you and advertise it if you wanna go that route. The mayor had also called me today and said, you know, let's think about some of the options we've looked at over the years for renovation of that building. And I pulled up one cost estimate, like I said, I probably had fifteen or twenty in my computer, but one cost estimate we did last summer was for a partial demolition and partial rehab of that building. That building is about a hundred fifty thousand square foot, a hundred sixty thousand, somewhere in there. And we, the option we looked at last summer was a demolition of sixty-five thousand square foot and a rehab of the other ninety-five thousand square foot. Some of that being auditorium-type facilities and some of it being an actual finish where you did mechanical HVAC lighting. Cost estimate on that project was around seven and a half million dollars. That's just one of the options. We've looked at options over the years that ranged from two to three million dollars to, I think, ten to twelve million, depending on what you wanna do with that facility. So, you know, I guess the question we need to look at tonight is, you wanna proceed with a demolition or a partial demolition or we'll look at some other options as far as remodeling of that building?
I'd like a copy of that. Now, that's what goes with the May twenty-third meeting when we met over there. That's the report that we were supposed to get a month after that meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, this cost estimate was done in July of two thousand thirteen, so that was after that.
May twenty-third?
Yeah, we walked to the site.
Right, right, okay.
I think the discussions at that meeting were, do a civic center type facility there. We're gonna rehab the roof at a cost of around a little less than a million dollars. There was gonna be a twelve thousand five hundred square foot auditorium, about eighteen thousand square foot of office area, meeting rooms, and then about a seventy-five thousand square foot exhibition hall that we talked about for some of your festivals. Total cost on that, like I said, was around seven and a half million.
But then, but then the estimate for just the seventy-five thousand square foot building was eight million dollars, so...
I bet it used seventy-five thousand?
Yes, according to the newspaper. It says Hankin said a new seventy-five thousand square foot building in Hamilton, if built from scratch as opposed to renovating the current building, would cost eight million dollars.
If we said that, I'm sure if one of the cost estimates we did, that's probably right.
That'd be high for a sound seventy-five thousand square foot?
Also in that article, they say that the renovation would be four point two million.
Renovation of, when was that?
That was in the article that you did up in the journal record.
Okay, that's probably an option we've looked at before this.
That's what Tammy's referencing.
Well, we know there's several options, I mean...
Yeah, like I said, you've got a...
A million or ten million?
You've got a hundred fifty thousand square foot building, there's, you can renovate a portion of it or all of it for various different costs. Depending on if you want an exhibition hall with no lighting and HVAC, more of an open roof or if you wanna do a, you know, civic center type facility, obviously your costs are gonna be higher or something like that.
By the way, we need a roof on, if we're gonna do it.
I will say in...
That's the first thing that you need to do is put a roof on.
We toured the building, you're saying in May of last year?
May twenty-third.
Yeah, which was the first time I'd been in it in probably three or four years and a lot of deterioration of that roof structure over that period of time.
As far as it was, there's a lot, yes, a lot worse.
What about the other structural part of it?
Yeah, when we first started looking at this thing, I guess the first time I went to the building was seven or eight, nine years ago, I think we could've got by at that point with just a new roof. You know, the new rememrated roof. Now it's to the point where you've had so much deterioration of that roof that you've got structural, not structural issues, but bar joist issues. Structurally, the building's fine, you know, the walls are fine, the main structural members are fine, but some of those bar joists have now been exposed to the atmosphere for so long a period of time, they're starting to rust. I don't, I don't think you'd get by today with just putting a new roof on the building. I think there would have to be some structural members, some bar joists replaced, if not all of them. New decking, something that may not have been done eight, nine years ago.
Well, we know that property's very valuable to the city to, to develop. We can have water park, nature trails, ball fields, numerous, numerous things we could do along the river. But is the building, if you build a new building, would that be cheaper than remodeling that one? Even though it'd be smaller? I mean, spec building costs for a million dollars and you can put another million or so with it and have a pretty nice building. That's supposed to spend ten million or eight million or six million on that one. You know, there may be more room, but is it feasible? You know, we gotta find out if it's feasible for the city, how much money we're gonna spend over there.
That's a discussion we had, you know, you've got a large building there. Question is, do you need that much space? If you went out today and built a new building, would you build a seventy-five, eighty thousand square foot building? I guess it depends on what your needs are.
And we talked about tearing part of that building down, part of the old part and leaving that big part. I do have a question, your experience in renovation versus new, even if you have to replace the structural members, and I went over and toured the building today myself, and so I looked in there and I do agree, it looks like some of those up there would, not the main structure, but the other ones wouldn't have to be replaced. But it just seems like if you've already got a pad, you already have walls and you already have the main structural components for the roof, that putting a decky and putting a roof on it would be significantly cheaper than demolition and going back and laying a new pad, putting new walls, putting a new structure up. In your past experience, is that, is that the way you've seen it or...
I think it depends on what your goal in the end is. If you want a hundred fifty thousand square foot building with twenty-foot, you know, ceilings, then yeah, it would be cheaper to renovate that building.
Right.
If your goal is to have a twenty thousand square foot facility with, you know, ten, twelve-foot ceilings in it, no, it would probably be cheaper to tear that down and start over.
Yeah, I'm just saying for the same square footage.
Same square footage with the same high roof.
Yeah.
You know, some of those roofs in that building are twenty, twenty-five foot plus and that's not the type of roofs that you want in a civic center or a municipal building or...
I'm, yeah, I'm just saying, we may want, if you, you know, decided if you want a twenty thousand square foot building, then part of that building, well, there's no real good sections that qualify for twenty thousand square feet, but as I say, there's one section there in building sixty-seven that's fifty thousand square feet. If we could take that fifty thousand square foot section and are reeling a new building fifty thousand square feet, comparable cost or less or...
Definitely cheaper to remodel if, if it fits your needs.
Okay.
It'll be a better building to build, a better built building than that building.
Yes, perfectly sound building.
That's brick, that's block with brick on the outside, if I remember.
Yes, I understand. Yeah, it's a well-built building, I mean...
Community, community storm, stuff underneath in the, in the basement, that basement's, I mean, that's a big, yeah, that's a big basement, I'm thinking.
It's hard building.
Thirty thousand, I remember, that's in good shape. People was in there basically rededicating.
Just playing in there.
Count LeRusin. Service park, Count LeRusin, he didn't have no bones.
But like it is, it's deteriorating and it's been deteriorating for eight years at least, if not longer. We either gotta bite the bullet and either fix it, tear it down, or do something with it. It's, you know, it's an eyesore, it's dangerous, it's a liability, we can't even get insurance on the building. So, that's the reason I wanted you to come tonight for this discussion, not that we're both tonight to do anything, but just kinda put our heads together, figure out and get something started, you know?
Yeah, there's numerous options out there that what you could do with a building and a property. So the last thing I think is to decide what is your need and then work towards that need to see is it, is it better to renovate that building or start over with something new?
What if a study was done to see about feasibility, how much is that?
Yeah, you mentioned it to me today and I'm, I'm not sure what that cost would be.
One time we talked like ten, twelve, fifteen thousand.
That's probably very close.
That's a lot of money, just, you know, commit to doing that.
Oh, would they tell us over the, what your town is?
Are you, what type of feasibility study are you talking about that?
Whether it was structurally sound or architectural, you know...
Yeah, as far as, you know, what we've done over the years and doing that again, if you come to us and say, we need a seventy-five thousand square foot auditorium and twenty-five thousand square foot of meeting space, you know, we can help you put those numbers together and we're not gonna charge anything for that. As far as everything I've seen in the building, there's nothing structurally wrong with the foundation, the walls, the main structural components of the building, it's just the roof.
We, cause I was about two minutes ago, before this building began, he was here. So he's, I'm not here to create a controversy, I'm here to just give my opinion and everybody's got one. Y'all accepted and won't charge you anything for it, okay? Eight, about eight years ago, we acquired that building, me and my counsel. Wallace Malone was a real good friend of a real good friend of mine, Mr. Gene Sanderson. I don't mind telling you, well, Gene was on the board of South Trust Bank here in town. And I met, I had a cup of coffee with Scotty about an hour and a half ago, so I didn't get Gene's permission to use his name, but I got his son, his grandson. So if you're listening, Gene, but Gene came down to my office and we called Wallace Malone. He said, yeah, write that building for sale. He said, we want nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for it. I said, Mr. Malone, we're not wanting to buy it, we want you to give it to us. So it was deathly silence for about thirty seconds and he came back and he said, let me think about that. South Trust was in the process of selling out to Wacoia and we knew that. And I said, Mr. Malone, you can give that building to us and write it off and make more money than if you sold it for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And he said, let me think about it. So he called me the next morning, or secretary did, and he said, Mr. Harper, get your attorneys and get the deeds all drawn up, we're gonna keep you that building. So they gave us that building and I don't know, what's over there, thirty acres, forty? Gave us that building free and clear, so the safety is that building is near and dear to my heart. And that was my goal, to get something done with it. We need a civic center, bad. We need jobs and something to bring people here. I said, and nobody, all of you guys knows that as well as I do. We need something to bring people here, but we need jobs. So, going back, I had, I've been through that building. I walked through it with three clients with an umbrella over my head. I swear to you, I'm a pretty good seller, but I ain't that good when you gotta walk through with umbrella to keep it from raining on your clients. So, to eat, that, in my opinion, we'd make a terrible mistake to tear that building down. That building, heat, it's got three kinds of material in the roof, there's three different types of roof on that building, there's a metal roof on part of it, buildup, tar and gravel or, and then a kind of rubberized roof on part of it. Part you're talking about, which is the low section, I got a quote on it, two quotes on it. Company from Columbus and Miller Roofing who put the roof on the courthouse. Five hundred and twenty, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, maybe more than that, probably will. I don't know, that's the quote we had on. If your, if your house is leaking and you wanna remodel it, first thing you do is put a roof on it, stop the water. So that's the main thing, is get a roof on it. But the section that he's talking about, that low section where you structure your wood, the last contractor, now what they do, Heath, you're probably familiar with that, they don't put that decking back there, the wood, they put insulated metal and your metal is also inside roof, so put metal on that. You say you're going to crack a bar and it's got a metal roof, but it's insulated on the other side. My opinion is, is the big section, the brick, the rib on the east, do it, do it in sections, do that section and it would accommodate anything we need in this town for event. Do that section and when I was mayor, that didn't have, that section didn't have a leak in it. I don't know, I don't know now, I hadn't been in it. That's particular section that I'm talking about, did not have a leak in it. So we could make an entrance on the outside just to that building. Get that done, get a roof on it, then get a roof on the rest of it. But I wouldn't tear any of it down. We got an opportunity. Eddie, where you at?
There you are.
Before you write in the paper that I don't even live near you longer, I may as well, I don't, but I'm fixing to move back, okay? They, they clear that up. So anyway, they say home is where your heart is, your heart is where your home is. This is my home. I'm from Walker County, this will always be my home. This mayor and this council has done a good job, I'm gonna say that. And I'm just, all I'm gonna do is say that building. You remember Corbin Chef, Ronald Reagan told Corbin Chef Berlin wall? He said, don't tear this wall down. So I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, Council, please don't tear this building down. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I know you're passionate about that and that's why we're having discussions, that's why we're having nobody's vote tonight to tear it down. We just wanna have some discussion and see if it's something that we wanna pursue and...
And that's why we're here. So if anybody else has anything to say, that's fine, we'll, we'll just keep moving forward. But we definitely wanna do something, the building is in disrepair, and we don't wanna leave it like it is. I want it repaired.
You got the man sitting right over here to help you get the money.
Yeah, we know that. He says we can borrow all we want.
I guarantee it.
And that's why he's here tonight, and this is why we're doing this, is, you know, we wanna, we wanna do something. And...
It was like Ray says, we can't do it all at one time.
You can't do that all at one time. But we gotta be willing to step forward. If it costs a half a million dollars, y'all wouldn't spend half a million dollars.
You should take that low section and turn it into a indoor flea market, like two little houses, have it once a month. You can't imagine how many people get...
There's a lot of possibilities. But we wanna do something with that, it's a great place to have a, we've even talked about having a water park. We need something for our kids.
Have something that nobody else has got.
Right. But any other comments on that, that part of the building?
Wait, one more thing, I had it set up, and you might wanna look into this. I had a meeting set up with the county commission, three of them, two on the opposite side of the county didn't show up. We got three on this side, and y'all know that story. Anyway, three of them showed up. Well, I said, we're waiting on them, I thought I had them talking to each other. So this suburban drive up, and there was, six people got out, three county commissioners and three cattle farmers. Oh, what's this? So one of them says, well, we need to be up high where we can see our cows. I said, we don't, this is not gonna be a cow barn, this is gonna be an exposition center. If y'all wanna build a cow, whatever you call it, a egg center. I said, you got about twenty-five acres back here behind it, we can do that. You can have rodeos, you can have all sorts of things. We just don't believe it, what could be done with it. But you might wanna bring the county commission into it, get them involved in C three. They talk about unity all the time, get them involved. Make it a, you ain't gotta call it the Hamilton Civic Center, call it the Marion County Civic Center.
I doubt they'd be willing to pitch any...
When they wanna build our mobile plant, we were the first to step in, giving them a million bucks, so...
That's exactly right. And it would have happened, it come that close to...
If the economy hadn't went down, folks, it would have happened.
Okay.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Ray, I appreciate your comments. Ryan, Nick, or please, Paul, if you wanna come forward, you can. You want to just mic, can you talk with it or what?
No, I don't think so. Just want to take a second, not, it's a labyrinth, don't have no slideshow. Do. What, what I'm going over tonight is a request. Is a request, I met with the Terry Sanders before the first of the year. And he is the loss control officer for the leading municipalities. And what I just wanna do tonight, while y'all are in work session, is to present this to you. What I'd like to do, one of the things that he brought before me that we needed to take care of, and possibly think of was body cameras, police officers. Get upside in liability situations, get upside in frivolous accusations, um, cuts down on bad behavior on officer parks, get cuts down on bad behavior on the... Some people call them perpetrators, some people call them, you know, defenders, I guess. But what I'd like to do is I put this together also with the line item number five, which is the equipment purchase of my budget. And on page number two, the thirty-eight hundred, or thirty-nine hundred and forty-one dollars is the total amount, I think it's for fourteen body, body cameras. The type that we're looking at is made by Taser, Axon. They have a night retina on them, so it shows up good at night. They have wider angle on them, they have a twelve-hour chargeable battery. The next one, too, this is less angle, less cheaper, less angle on the view, no night retina. Two hour chargeable battery. The, also, back part of it, I acquired from the leading municipalities, standard operating procedure policy, they would go into effect with the police department upon your approval for these body cameras. I think this would be a good thing for us for liability insurance. Like I said, for frivolous accusations both ways.
Where are these cameras?
You have a lock problem or what?
Not really, just occasionally. They would, they would attach your paler, your shirt pocket, something like that. Officers be required to wear a home DVD at all times. That's the explanation of our policy. And also on this price sheet, is a three-month free usage of what is called evidence dot com storage. We're gonna look at that for three months. I don't anticipate us going with that, I anticipate us going with just a hard drive ourselves and downloading to a computer, which we'd be able to maintain ourselves.
Chief for Dean, are you using this now?
Nobody in this area has these cameras.
We do have the money in our budget.
Taser is ready to come.
The council approved it to cover this in their equipment budget.
Are you saying you've got forty-three thousand, what's this?
This is thirty-three thousand four hundred and thirteen remaining.
Well, what we got coming up, before the next year, you got anything?
I'm just doing small equipment replacements, not replacing vehicles or anything like that. I've got some computers, you know, along, along the way, upon torn up, that I'm having to replace. A couple of Taser weapons and sales, just equipment purchases.
Okay.
No, I have no big purchases.
This is something we'll consider by the next week?
Yes. You said this thing requires to wear them in the S and P. Broke some, uh, is that also required to wear our vest, I guess, at all times? Uniform on some person.
If you've got any kind of diagram, picture, whatever, somewhere in the office, come now and then we can look at or...
It's about the size, it's about height and size of this, about that size. It clips on the little pal, on the button here, on the front of the shirt somewhere along the pockets, on the front of the jacket, somewhere like that. It's got easy on, easy off, it's audio and, like I said, lighting or recording.
Where would they not be required to keep them on, on their home DVD? What would the service staff go and turn it off?
If they're just doing routine patrol and nothing's going on, you know, they could turn it off and say, charge on battery. If they're in here sitting doing paperwork, something like that, they can say, charge on battery.
Yeah, I see. Perhaps I can kind of try it in two years?
No, ma'am. We would download it, there'd just be certain ones of us that would download the information off of it and have access to the information, so that it wouldn't be, but keep it as tamper-proofed off.
Yeah, okay. How long did you set the battery, you know, the charge?
It says twelve hours.
How long are the shifts?
Twelve. Then that's comparable batteries, too. Just kind of like these cell phones, we wear it too. Just, you know, it's supposed to last all day, but, um, it depends on which year.
And this was something that leading municipalities, the loss control, deep through over, trying to figure out ways to be less cut a liability. You know, this might be something that, that could help in an instance where somebody said, well, officer did this or said this, if you got it on video, recording.
It's, it's used as a matter of evidence in court also, you know, as far as DUIs, arrest, that nature, resisting arrest. Simple conversations can be recorded, interviews, stuff of this nature, they're taking, you know, reports from somebody.
Would it not need to run continuously? That way, if it was used in court, there wouldn't be a block here and a block there?
I mean, that's acceptable for it to go on. We've got cameras in the car, but, you know, some of those have gone out. They were... They were, it's them first. Um, these, when you, when you look at cameras in the car, you're looking quite straight ahead. If anything takes place over here, then there's no visual over there. Whereas if officers turn that way, you can see it that way. Plus, the cameras in the car system right now are expensive.
Oh, yes.
Very expensive.
What is the total price on this?
Thirty-nine hundred dollars.
What, three thousand eight, eight, seven, seven?
Total, the shit.
Oh, we got the shit, yeah, okay, I got it.
And then that three hundred and ninety, is, that three hundred and ninety dollars is waived for three months. If we continue that service, then they'll start charging us.
Well, is this, on the front of you, do you have a visual vision out to the side, or is it just a tunnel?
This particular camera here is wider angle than, than any other model that's out right now. And it has like, I think it's a hundred and thirty degrees, which is pretty much side to side.
Wider than the cameras in the car? Or tell me there, is it comparable to it or what?
About the same, yes, about the same.
So what are the new cameras in the car costing?
I would...
Approximately?
Approximately one camera would cost what, fourteen, fifteen?
I mean, we don't have working.
I don't think that'd be in the part right there.
Really?
Yeah. I'll roll that one out. Probably that it lasts long enough. Heat got to them, some of the equipment really wasn't that updated or that durable.
And we got those new cars, did we not get, did you get new cameras? Was all that, uh, equipment just transferred over?
Some of the cameras were transferred over since then, but they quit.
We didn't get new ones or ones?
What would you rather have, a body mic or a call?
I would prefer to start off with body mics and then get whatever is, get you another price on car cameras and stuff of that nature.
You're talking about eight colors?
Ten, eleven, twelve.
Whatever officer had, mic, clip?
Yes, the, the mic is built into the, it's self-contained, it's got the video, I mean, the video camera on it. Plus, like I said, this, this particular model has what's called a night retina. It's, it, it can see the low light. The other one, if it's dark, it, your video dark.
So, any questions?
Okay. Dean?
Yes, sir? We was winning in thirteen to five, life scored up, they died.
Tim was going to call them, so...
Yeah, it was raining when I come to figure it. And I guess, which way I wanna start, I guess it is, is, of course, we talked about the ISO deal, about the trucks, pumper tankers, which direction you wanna head in? You know? I mean, I've got a building and two trucks and manpower and, but which direction do we need to head in? You know, I guess, we got, we're supposed to have three pumbers in service and a reserve. And we've got two pumbers that's in service now, reserve truck didn't pass the pump test, but we still get credit for it. It'll only up to what we pump, at a hundred feet of PSI, or how long we pump us, whatever it pumps, gallons per minute, we still get credit for it, please don't get full credit. So we're down basically one truck. And the tanker that we have over there now, the tank's gone, it's been patched in it, it's got ninety holes in it right now. Well, we've just been getting by. I mean, that's, we've done that for years.
When was the last new truck bought?
Eighteen years ago. Six.
Engine?
Yeah. Five, six. And then we've got, the one that didn't pass the pump test this year is eighty-third, it's thirty years old. But we could use it for a reserve pumper and still get credit for it. You know, did we, did we move towards the east side of town with the station and the truck? You know, if we do that, it's gonna take two trucks and then plus a building. You're looking at five hundred, five hundred and forty thousand and around, I don't know what a level billion size would cost.
Is that a new truck or a used truck?
That's a new truck.
Okay, what, are there used trucks?
There's used trucks out there, yeah. Uh, but the way I see it, if you buy it, and you can get some good used ones if you can find them. You know, I'd hate to buy a ten-year-old truck and three years down the road, we're sitting there looking for ten thousand dollars. And that's just a risk you're running on those.
You haven't talked to him about the tanker system?
The water shuttle?
Water shuttle, we acquired two tankers. Might help us if we couldn't afford to put the six-inch lines and water hydrants everywhere that need them. Plus, we know those areas of town do not have that.
Yeah, that's just like, we go east of town...
If you had two tankers, trucks, ISO would recognize that as heaven.
Yes, if we can, if we can move two hundred and fifty gallons a minute and sustain it for an hour, two hours, uh-huh, you're gonna be able to do that. Now, it's like, if you go east of town and you put a station down there and a truck out there, but you're not within a thousand foot of a fire hydrant, still get nothing.
Right.
So what are you telling us that has to be ISO comparable that we've got to?
Well, we need one truck right now for sure, to get this station down here covered and one out at Weston covered, for sure. Around two hundred and seventy thousand, that's a pump tanker. That takes care of the tanker that we've got over there now, instead of replacing it. And that would take care of the tanker part of it, and it would take care of the pump part of it. And if you wanted to go move something to east side, we could do that.
On better lines or water hydrants?
That would be something we're riding.
But you're saying to get the east side compliant, without new water lines, without new fire hydrants, you're gonna need two pumper tankers and a building?
That's right.
How much is that gonna cost?
Five hundred and forty thousand for the two trucks.
Overhead remove?
And then just ever, ever have, being you wanna build a building out there.
Which it don't have to be big, it could be a metal, it could be a steel, a private.
But I, you know, wouldn't build for now, I wouldn't build for expansion. I mean, I saw, I think, as long we got into the shape we're in now, we just built for now, and we're not thinking about a few ten years down the road.
And that's why I'm just thinking, if we do any new money, now's the time to do it. If we're gonna upgrade, do any kind of, uh, projects, besides refinancing the two thousand six farms, now would be the time to do any kind of capital purposes, if we're gonna do something.
It is, and the trucks running, working two forty to two seventy, it just depends on how you spec them out. I mean, I've called everybody and they give you, well, what do you want on it? Well, you know, you just about gotta spec them out to get the price you want. And they give them a basic range from two forty to two seventy.
She would use it though.
Depends on if you find one. I would, depends on how old it is. And I could do some checking on that and find it out.
Are you talking over a hundred thousand, more?
Could be more, could be less, just depends on how old it is.
We don't let none of the two seats in do it.
That's, that's what was spec.
Why don't we need that one with two men, uh, supposed to get to the station, this truck's gotta leave.
Do, do what, yeah.
If we can't get a station, that truck's gotta leave, why don't we have to have a four-door truck?
That's when you get a station, that truck's got to leave, why don't we have to have a four-door truck?
You're not going to get any more four doors.
No, no, these are just...
Whatever we get.
That's what I'm saying, when you going to get another one for...
No, sir.
No, sir. That's right.
What kind of chassis is that, or some of these?
They're built Pierce chassis, which is, that's all they do, is build fire trucks.
Can you get other chassis?
You can get other chassis, you can get KME from Florence, like around Decatur, they build them, but they build them out of state. And then there's E1, there's three or four different ones you can get. I called all three, I called KME, E1 and Pierce, and without sitting down and specing out the truck, they can't, couldn't give me a, they just give me a range.
They still put Fords or Chevys on them?
The, I think the KMEs do.
Trucks?
Yeah, the Pierce build from ground up.
Pierce is a bit higher, I'm sure.
Yeah, they, yeah, they all...
They're all the same.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we've got now, that's what we've had. We got...
It could be better, no? I mean, we've had, well, that ain't three's a chivalry.
Yes, sir. It has a gas burn. Yes, it's got hydraulic brakes on it.
Uses hydraulic brakes.
You know, that's the way they can get it.
A hot tail light.
A pumper tanker.
Pumper tanker.
Yeah. We've got some gear also that's wearing out, we got that grant about eight years ago. We replaced nine sets last year, and I'd like to at least get five sets this year. I talked to the dealers the other day, and they said, of course, they always say this, but two months they're going up on price. Five sets a year would be ninety-five hundred dollars. And that's, would be, that would give us fourteen new sets, one more about last year, about ten more.
Ten more besides this?
What's the life of a bike?
Yeah, usually, you know, depends on, the full-time guys will wear them out a lot quicker than some of the volunteers, because it is brand every day. We're having trouble with some helmets now, but that's not just a whole humongous expense to replace that along the way we go.
And you do have one equivalent fund paid for that?